Hi, everybody. Full house today. Welcome to the Wellington Board of Education meeting, adjourned at 7:02 on Tuesday, November 11th, 2025. I would like to ask everyone to join us in the pledge of allegiance. All right. Number three. Board of Education representatives' report.
Yes, you are going to be up first today. Let me share my screen. Here you go. Who's on first?
Friday, October 10th, was our first spirit day for this school year. It was Wear Your Own Center School T-shirt Day. Friday, November 7th, was Crazy Sock Day.
On Wednesday, October 15th, we had a short assembly to kick off our monthly Royal Beards convention. The Royal, also known as Mr. Conley, was our master of ceremony. Royal Beards are different from symphonies because they are chosen for showing a specific favorite for each month. For example, October's tree was by Mr. Conley, who recognized to got to wear a purple Royal Beard. But Mr. Conley is grateful. Three scores weighed pumpkins to learn about the concept wider and the same. They worked together to determine which category it best fits. Students how to identify who's that more, less, or the same by playing a bingo game with different colors, got a stack of cards and showed them to each group of players. Cards had ten colors, various colors, represented by black, white, or hand shown one through ten. Students had to look at their board and find a match. They drew red and yellow markers to cover the matches.
First graders learned all about pumpkins and painted them as a special treat on Halloween.
Second graders learned about ancient pottery after reading about ancient Greek civilizations. They explored the different designs and styles of brick pottery, then got creative by designing their own ancient Greek faces. To help of a parent volunteer, they used symmetry to draw and cut faces out of paper bags and decorated them with inspired patterns using paint markers.
Third graders went on a field trip to Foster Farm in South Windsor on October 31st. They connected learning about bicycles, animals, farming environment, and their CKLA knowledge units to the trip. They had a lot of fun playing in the corn pit, having the corn maze, and leading the farm animals. They also learned how to measure area and square, just feet and centimeters.
The fourth grade chorus practiced on Halloween for the Veterans Day Assembly. They will sing "America the Beautiful," "Thank You, Soldiers," and "America, My Country," together.
The Wellington PTA hosted the annual trucker shoot in the CES parking lot on Friday, October 24th. Kids and families came from all over came to collect candy. It was a great night and everyone had fun. Thank you, PTA.
Today is Veterans Day. We recognize our family members who have served or are serving in our country and the armed force by having an assembly. If what three chorus sings three songs are according of students being interviewed about what it means to have a veteran in their family was played during the assembly. Kids presented their veterans with the red, white, or blue carnation as a thank you for serving our country and a slideshow pictures of a veteran. At the end, veterans were invited to stay for a short continental break and the cafeteria after the assembly.
Oh, yeah, you want to sneak in? Sneak in. There's a chair way over here. Yeah, for sure. We good, you're good.
The Wellington Human Services Department and the local prevention council sponsored a guest speaker for us in October. Nathan Harmon delivered a powerful message of resilience, hope, and empowerment to our students. Some of the takeaways for our students include, "You are rare, you're scarce, and you are unique." And what I feed will grow and what I starve will die. Nathan showed us that the more people we have supporting us, pulling our ladders, the more we can accomplish, the higher we keep.
In Spanish class, fifth graders got a little creativity, so they lost more interest.
This one?
Fifth graders enjoyed their annual fall festival on Halloween. Students gathered to share a special snack and snuggled and they were challenged by an escape room and learned facts about Halloween. Miss Lemay shared a storybook and Mr. Son of the Bad Students and a fun musical experience. Thank you to Miss Gary and the fifth grade team for spending this Sunday. In ELA class, we had a conference session to give our class some feedback on the narrative shortstop. As part of their social studies of ancient civilizations, students in the school media staff tried learning and that the making of a contextual style of the garden on an app.
Students in Mrs. Nizer's class watched each step of the dissection and then they tried it themselves. They were able to identify and diagram each part of the app.
Oh, sorry. In eighth grade science, we are continuing our exploration of physics with an analysis of forces interaction.
Mrs. Char's art students have been hard at work from beautiful artwork to color houses. Our sixth graders created timber inspired portraits. Seventh graders delved into math and acres and sport abstract styles and painting.
We've been doing a base survey thing for the last two weeks, and it'll continue until the end of November. The grades that lose some of those items will be rewarded with a movie down December 5th. So far, we've collected 889 food items. Today, we honored and celebrated our veterans during the assembly. The band and choir performed the armed force medley. And when joined, we enjoyed a video with messages thanking our veterans.
That is the end. Nice job, you guys. I told the middle school crew something that Mrs. Lemay said to me. And she said, "In my prior school, when we did a food drive, it'd take two weeks to get some." In the first couple of days, she was like, "I have no idea what we're going to do with all this food." You did an amazing job. And when it came over here, we actually emptied her car. And there's a gentleman upstairs that was helping us. And he just kept going back over the cover room. Is there really more food out there? You guys did a fantastic job with us. Thank you very much. You guys want to take a minute to file out? You don't have to say, but now is your time to hop up and enroll. Thank you, parents.
Thank you guys so much.
And then there were four?
All right, moving on. Item number four, our PTA report. You are up.
Hello, hello. I'd just like to share a few exciting updates from the past month and some upcoming events that we are looking forward to. So the first event is that I'd like to update you guys on is our holiday dessert fundraiser, pies and cookie dough, most important. Thanks to the incredible support of families and community, we collectively raised just over $3,000. It's always such a huge fundraiser. Who knew pie and cookie dough, right? One of our biggest fundraisers of the year. A huge round of applause to our top three classes. Mrs. Lee's class, first grade, sold 72 items. Mrs. Bergen's class in pre-k sold 28 items. Mrs. Brista's kindergarten class sold 24 items. And congratulations to our top three individual sellers. We had Mackenzie Sapino with 24 items sold, Christopher Knight with 22 items sold, and Colton McKenzie's little brother sold 20 items. And he's in pre-k. We had 53 students participated and collectively sold 358 items. Absolutely amazing. Our pie distribution will take place during parent teacher conferences on Monday, November 24th, starting at 3:30 PM. That's at Center School. Our next event is our trunk retreat. What a massive community event this was. While over 500 people in attendance, we had 30 amazingly decorated trunks. The Wellington Hill Fire Department provided delicious food, which completely sold out. So that's absolutely amazing because the year prior did not. So thank you guys for coming out and eating their food. Thank you to everyone who donated extra candy and/or extra funds. It truly makes a difference. Because we end up losing all of it. Congratulations to our top three trucks, Jenny and Joe Kala and family with The Nightmare Before Christmas. Their display is just so amazing. Theatricals, movies, moving parts, all kinds of stuff. 271 votes. Second place, Nan King in the senior center with Mad Hatter, 154 votes. And third place is the Wellington Republican Town Committee, the Old Cat Lady and Her Furry Crew with 152 votes. It's amazing to see such creativity and community spirit each year. The kids absolutely love this event, so thank you all for making it such a special night, one that the kids truly look forward to each year. Our third event update is the Election Day Big Sale. We raised just over $1,500, which is convenient because that's what we donate each year. The proceeds go directly towards our annual donation for the Wellington Dollars for Scholars Foundation, which provides scholarships to local students pursuing higher education. This foundation is very near and dear to our hearts, and we are proud to support it each year. Finally, the holiday shops are right around the corner. CES Holiday Shop is December 1st through 5th. Volunteers are always needed and appreciated, so please keep an eye out for the signup sheet in this week's digital backpacks. HMS Holiday Shop will be December 8th through 12th. Students at HMS are a bit more independent, so volunteers are not necessarily needed. But we would love if anybody would like to help us, we will absolutely take your help. Our next PTA meeting will be held Tuesday, December 2nd at 6:30 PM at the Wellington Public Library in the lower conference room. We'll be reviewing and possibly updating our current bylaws. We'd love to see as many members as possible. Your input truly matters. And thank you so much for your time tonight. If anyone has any questions, willingtonpta@gmail.com. Thank you, guys. Thank you so much.
What was it? The big sale? I missed the number.
It was just over 1,500, so it was like 1,558 or something like that. Yeah. Oh, my goodness, the bakers. I literally reached out to her two days before the bake sale. I said, "We can't have a bake sale without your help."
Wait a second. Was that your?
Yes. Yes, we had so many, so many people in the community donate baked goods, so thank you all so much.
Amazing. All right, thank you so much. And thank you for the ongoing work that you guys do. It's amazing. Item number five, Chairperson Report. I'm sure that everyone can see that I'm not Brianna. Brianna is sick today and was not able to make our meeting, so I am pinching her today. So I would love people's patience and, you know. She did want me to remind everybody about CAE. If you guys are interested to check in with Brenda, it's very informative and helpful, so. Number six, Present to Speak. Anybody in the room and online is welcome to speak. We will start in the room. Anyone in the room? Mr. Tella.
You can tell Bertha Road, Wellington, stay short in the beginning here. I and other people had noted comments that Phil had made towards the end of last meeting in regards to public comment. And he said, stated, "I've just learned to let people talk and then move on." I just find that interesting that basically, say whatever you want to say, screw you, I'm going to move on. That's interpretation I took. I won't speak for others, but that's the perception that's out there, which has been something that other people have thought too, so. Thanks.
Anyone else in the room present to speak? Anybody online present to speak?
Give me one second.
Sure, sorry.
I don't know what.
You're upside down, so. Yeah. Oh. Lori.
Hi, I just would like to say, if anyone's going off the Board of Ed, thank you for your hard work. I really appreciate everything that Phil Stevens does and what the Board does. I think it's really important that we do the work of the town and the schools and it not be political, that we try to do the best we can and stay positive and work with each other for new people who might be coming on. And again, I appreciate, I substitute at Center School. I'm a retired teacher, and what I see in the schools is great, great staff, lots of great stuff going on. And I just want the Board to know and Mr. Stevens to know that I support you. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. And Jamie.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, hi. Good evening. As this new term begins, I just wanted to start by wishing all of you well and acknowledging the importance of the hard work ahead. Serving on the Board carries tremendous responsibility, not only for our students and staff, but to the community that places its trust in you. Independent judgment, transparency, and accountability aren't just expectations, they're the foundations of the trust. I want to publicly acknowledge that I recently submitted a series of questions to the Board, and I hope to have them answered publicly as well. Documented responses would help both the community and the Board clarify how oversight functions in practice, especially after the last meeting, which revealed some uncertainty among members about roles and responsibilities. Many times, the boundaries between the Board and administrative roles appear to overlap, which complicates accountability. A few observations from the last meeting that caused concern were that several members admitted to not understanding their role, and some stated that they just wait for Phil to tell them that something's wrong. In that same discussion, Phil explained that when the Board receives a concern, they can simply ask him if a policy was followed, and his answer would determine whether a violation occurred. While that approach may be intended to streamline communication, it limits the Board's ability to independently verify compliance and creates the appearance that oversight depends on administrative discretion. Brianna had mentioned several times that the Board's job is policy. And while the Board's role extends far beyond that, her statement underscores the importance of ensuring that the district policies are accurate, current, and aligned with state requirements. I recognize there's a policy committee, but the scope of existing gaps in the policies is, it looks like a full review is long overdue. I'm hopeful that the Board will review the complete policy set, confirm what's current, identify what might be missing, and align the language with that statute and the Connecticut model. When policies are inconsistent and inaccessible, it weakens confidence and governance. One of the areas that I hope you can pay closer attention to more immediately is Policy 5116, school climate. It says challenging behavior or bullying. The district version acknowledges that each school must have a climate committee and school climate specialist, but omits key statutory requirements regarding the composition of those committees. Under the general statute 10222K, each committee must include at least one parent or guardian, one teacher, one administrator, one student for non-elementary school, and one community representative. Wellington's current policy does not include that language. The statute also requires that school climate surveys be administered to students, school employees, and parents or guardians. That provision is missing from the district's policy as well. These surveys are not formality. They are an important tool for assessing climate, identifying areas for improvement, and ensuring student well-being. Looking back, there was a policy committee meeting that had it on the agenda. However, Policy 5116 was first described as a quote "process" to make sure there's good climate around discipline, and later referred to simply as quote "the bullying section." However, the school climate framework goes far beyond discipline or bullying. It's designed to promote emotional safety, inclusion, and equity throughout learning environment. When it's framed narrowly, the broader intent of the policy, the spirit of the law are lost. Phil was correct in noting that the policy is now mandatory statewide, but given how far we are into the school year, our children started in August. We are just about to have our first parent teacher conferences, and there's still no public communication about how or when Wellington will implement this. A policy that exists only on paper without public awareness, timelines, or participation does little to advance goals that we are designed to achieve. I would also encourage the Board to publicly identify who serves as a climate specialist in each school as required by law. It's also worth noting that several of the goals still remain expired under the mission's goals and objectives. They were adopted in 2009 and expired in 2013. It's not criticism, but a reminder why it's so important to periodically review and update the district's guiding documents. It seems like some of those goals weren't even achieved, so that makes it even more important to kind of bring it up to date. Lastly, I wanted to acknowledge briefly like the number of high turnover it seems that we're having in the school. I see, I see the time. Thank you. And I just hope, thank you so much. I actually am paying attention. Thank you. But there's a large number of turnover in the schools, and I just hope the Board is trying to check on that for any kind of, I don't know, pattern because it seems like a lot of teachers are leaving. And that's really hard on the kids when people they grow to trust leave the school. And I was also going to comment on the same thing that Nick said. Like after one of the staff members publicly spoke and then, you know, Phil kind of brushed it off as he just moves on. It's disheartening as a parent or a member of the community that we come on here to speak and then it just, we just move on from it. And that's honestly what it feels like, and I hope that can change. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle.
Good evening. Michelle Dusset Cunningham, Lyska Road. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but since the previous speaker mentioned a number of things that happened during my time on the Board of Education, I wanted to mention that it is not uncommon for a Board of Education to update policies all at once, maybe once every five or six years, and in between those years to update them as the laws change. It's not something that the policies are changed immediately as soon as the law is passed. There is time for the Boards to meet and implement and create those policies. As long as the Board is following the law, the policies will be updated. But if the Board had to update the policies the second anything changed or anybody questioned something, your meetings would go until 2:00 AM every time. So I want to thank you for the work that you have done on policy. And I, of course, am very familiar with the school climate bill because I serve as a co-chair, one of the three co-chairs of the School Climate Committee for the State of Connecticut and helped write the law. So there's no way that Wellington, the place where I live and have served for more than 12 years, is out of compliance in any way on those things. It is meant to support positive school climate as well as to support behavior supports and to make the processes as transparent as possible. Nothing is going to be perfectly transparent. There are legal limitations as to what can be said in public meetings, et cetera. So please note that I have been, I have used my experience in Wellington in helping with creating some of these laws, and I'd be happy to speak with anyone who has additional suggestions for how they could be improved going forward. But I'm very happy with the way it's being implemented. And I just wanted to thank the Board for the work you've done on the policy, as well as you, Mr. Phillips, for leading your staff in doing such a good job having a positive school climate. Is it perfect? No. No school is ever perfect because there's always examples of incidents that will happen. But the overall situation in Wellington is one in which I am very proud, and I frequently discuss at the state level about what a great job is being done in our school systems based on what I have seen here and in other places around the state. Of course, it's not perfect, and every time a child is not having the optimal experience, of course, we want to address that. No one wants to ever see a child be unhappy. But life is like that, and we cannot prevent every single problem from happening through policy. And I think you guys are doing a great job on policy, and I just wanted to come out and say that publicly because it is something I watch very closely. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Anyone else present to speak? Jamie, do you have another, or your hand is still up?
Yes, I do, please.
Okay.
So in reference to what Michelle just said, I wasn't saying that the, the thing is, the policy has been voted on and it's on the website. It's incomplete. So there was a policy committee meeting. It was adopted and put on the website, but it's not complete according to state statute, which is why I'm mentioning it. It's missing the whole aspect of developing all of this. And as far as my understanding is, it was supposed to start July 1st, 2025. So no one's saying anything about the actual climate. I'm wanting to know, like, when is there going to be a committee formed? Who, how are we going to be notified about this? Who is the committee specialists? And I am concerned about this and the policies on the website because the mission's goals and objectives are more than a decade old. That's why I brought it up. It's not like it's five years old. It's more than a decade old. They were from 2013 they expired. And then this also comes after the last meeting where there was a deep discussion about a policy that is not on the website, not found in the handbook, but it was hailed as good leadership for it being followed. Yet I've brought six policies to the Board that I would hope that somebody would talk about, and they've been completely ignored. So I'm just trying to make it so that it's black and white, clear as crystal because in my line of work, I deal with a lot of contracts. And if it's not in the contract, you don't have to follow it. If it isn't a contract, you have to follow it. And I'm just trying to make it black and white and clear as crystal and trying to help there not be this gray area of which policies we're going to cherry pick to follow on who, according to who it benefits, the district or somebody else. So that's all I was saying. I'm just asking that the policy be updated to match that of the law, the statute, and that we can get this going with the climate because it's already November. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, goodness.
Just one note is that
Michelle, sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. The mission and goals that are on the website are out of date, but the Board has passed mission and goals every two years. So I think that maybe they did not get updated in that place on the policy page, so. So um I think that maybe they did not get updated in that place on the policy page. So uh just a note, Mr. Stevens, if you would double check that place for updating because um that is the place where she's referencing, and I know that we've passed them every two years um since then.
Can I comment on that too? I'm sorry, yeah.
I just, I've only been on the board for, this is my ninth year starting today or next month. And so somewhere else on the website, when I look them up, they'll cause the the, they're there. When you look for the mission statement, it's there under mission statement, but it may not be in the other place, but those have been there because I've looked for them myself instead of trying to find them in this mess.
Right, right. So we will make sure that everything is where it needs to be. Um. Okay, Jamie, if you have something else, I would, i- if it's about another topic, that's fine, but we can't do back and forths during present to speak.
She can't, she can unmute. Do you want me to unmute?
Okay. All right, um, anybody else who hasn't spoken present to speak? All right, um, moving on, item number seven, communications.
They're just listed there. You you can see what you've gotten. You think you've gotten all of those, and then I told you I would share the FOI requests that have come in since the beginning of the year. And you can see they're there if you want me to email them to you. You can see them, but those are the FOI requests that have come in and.
Have they all been processed?
Some of them are still in the works. Sometimes it's just back and forth.
Is it the company or vendor that does it for IT work or is it?
If it's a, if it's an email search and it's something I can do based, they're on site, they have to do it. Okay, yeah.
I have a question about that. I've been thinking about this since the last meeting. You said you were gonna do it, and I'm wondering if maybe the better tactic on this is to let us know and email the FOI request, not put the names on the agenda because I don't want people to think it's punitive that their names are out there on a
Just email you and you want to get them?
I think it's a better tactic, yeah. I mean, I might be alone on this. Um, I'm not saying that's what we have to do, but I, that's just one thing on that one.
My point was really just to let you know that they take a lot of time. And so you know that that's another thing I'm doing. That could happen through an email. It doesn't have to be on here.
Well, I I think what would serve the purpose also is how many we have. Like, I'm not sure that the names are. I think it's interesting and important to know that how many FOI requests you're working on. I'm not sure the names are necessarily.
I can do that.
Um, anything else on FOI? Um, number eight superintendent report.
I'm sitting in my elementary principal who I know wasn't doing well, and she's sitting here, so you guys can stay or go. It's up to you. All right, so enrollment. As of today, Center School has two hundred and fifteen students. That is an increase of three students from last month. And Hall School has a hundred and sixty four students. That's an increase of one student from last month. We currently have three hundred and seventy nine students in district. Staffing is the quietest I've had it. Um, the after school program director that I announced last time, I think it was the very next day, she called and said, this is not the right job for me. Maria Panos, so she resigned. Uh, she didn't even get a day into the program. She had a day in training. Um, and so it was reposted out, and we hired Kelly Ainsworth. She's uh started and she's settling in. She's learning all the procedures, uh and I think she's excited to be a part of our school community. So that's going well. The twenty six, twenty seven budget calendar, I always push this as early as I can so that way we can make sure we have dates and people know. Um, this is a draft. Uh, I'm proposing Wednesdays again at five thirty, three weeks in a row, January fourteenth, twenty one, twenty eight, with a final discussion before your board meeting on February tenth. This is my left what you've done for the last, you know, several years. I am waiting on these other budget items. Obviously, I think there's with elections that could be slower, but this is usually what I get from Donna. Um, you know, when Board of Finance and they work backwards from the referendum. Uh, but this is what I would propose to you uh for your discussions, if you want to model it after what you've done. If that has worked for you in that day of the week, tends to work for you again, then I'll bring that calendar back to you in December, and you can vote on it in December. Do you have any thoughts now?
Works for me.
I didn't know if that five thirty is what we've been doing, if that was a push or not, so as long as it's fine, I will keep it going. Okay, uh radon testing, this is taking a blow on my time. Uh, we are gonna be wait, uh testing for radon in both schools in December. Um, I took a comprehensive approach to testing because we did not have records in my office or either school prior to two thousand ten. Um, we have records from two thousand ten, two thousand fifteen, and two thousand twenty one. The only record we have before two thousand ten was a single test for one location. I don't know how that conversation started. Um, and that was a report for the HMS District Education Office, and that is in the girls locker room. That was the one that showed elevated levels of radon. It came about randomly through a conversation that when we hired in a a female PE teacher, uh and I went to say, here's your office, and I, someone said to me, you can't put anybody in there in storage. There's radon. And I said, what are you talking about? So we've done a ton of research since. Um, and I did put out a letter to families today and let them know what's going on. DPH did say you can use it as storage. We did, once we heard that, we purchased a test kit from the local hardware store, and we did test the locker room and that space, the the office space ourselves. Uh, and when we tested them, the storage area did come back uh above the acceptable level. It was in the sixes, and acceptable level is a four. Um, and the locker room was below that acceptable level. It was in in the two range. Um, it can't be above four. So we uh found a locally approved environmental company, A and R. We have to go off of a list that is provided by DPH. Um, and they are currently performing radon tests. I wanted it just from a cautionary standpoint as soon as possible. Um, they are doing the full comprehensive testing. There's like sixty six tests we're doing in December. Um, but we are doing four locations right now. Um, both locker rooms, the boys PE office, and the women's PE office. Um, just out of pure similar type, let's just be sure, especially because this basketball season, they're in there. Their tests are regoing. Uh, we should know hopefully within a week. Um, if they come back with a problem, I will let you know. Uh, Sam had a really good idea to, uh, we talked about getting um a digital radon reader, basically just sits there. Um, so I went to Home Depot that day and picked up one. It's, there's one sitting in there, and it's been over there over the weekend. We have it in the girls locker room right now because it's attached to the office, right? The office door is closed. That's the storage area. It's closed. Um, and it hasn't read above two point O, which is good. That's exactly what we were hoping for. Um, but we're just being very sure about this. Uh, because I don't have, I just didn't feel comfortable about this, because I don't have that introductory sixty six test all ground level that are occupiable. I'm testing every location. Uh, it's gonna cost a couple grand. It's worth every penny, and we're basically starting from scratch. All of that data will be on the website. Uh, if something comes back, we're gonna mitigate. Um, and I'm gonna propose already that we mitigate the the office space. Um, I just need to, I wanna wait till they all come in, so it's a package deal. If we need to do uh multiple, I don't know that that will be the case, but that's what we're having with it.
So you'll bring a price back to us?
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have like a kindergarten version of how you'd remediate that? Like, is it involving digging up floors? Like, I just am not, I have no understanding of.
So I actually just had one of these put in my house not long ago. Um, they drill a hole in your concrete floor, and then they just vent. It's like a constant vent. Um, and then you're just supposed to test. If you have a a space that has radon in it and you put, you mitigate it, you then test every two years. You make sure that's on your list to test regularly. Everything else now is three years, but I don't know for that particular location how they would mitigate it. It is on an exterior wall. It is a one story, which means it could be vented through a roof. Um, it also depends on what they find out to, I guess. I don't know if every single unit is individual. Um, we will wait and see, but that's typically, it's like, it just looks like a PDC, PDC pipe into the ground with a fan that just blows it out. So that stored, sorry, that storage area is closed. The other thing I will say, Sam, in her HVAC experience, said, check to see if there's any vents between rooms. Um, there is a vent that we're not sure if it's connected between the locker room, bathroom, which is a single stall closed door, and the office. That door has been open, and it has not gone above two point O. However, we are going to close that door this weekend. The girls have to use it right now for basketball. Um, we're gonna close that door and leave the office door closed, so we just get a reading of the locker room in case that it is traveling, if that makes sense.
Is it like a um?
Looks like a shower vent. It's a grate. It's not, it's not one of those. It's
Like a bypass thing right in the door that's just a little hole that's going, like a transfer.
I gotta assume because it's uh connected to a shower, but it's also the bathroom next to it doesn't have, it's the same grate. I can take snap a picture for you of it, but.
Yeah.
So we're we're on it. Um, again, I, this is where it's like, okay, if we have a facilities director, I I'd be very happy. Um, I've learned more about radon than I'm here to say. I will say the state resources on this are outstanding. When I looked it up the first time, the the list of vendors was updated in October of twenty five. Um, so that's great. I called DPH. I got an epidemiologist. We had a great conversation. I asked a bunch of questions. Um, but we're on it. Uh, and I won't, it's gonna be transparent. It's gonna be on the website. It's being organized right now by year of what we have, and then we'll test moving forward, so.
So when you talked about extensive testing, you mean going out beyond?
Correct.
You're talking all over the school or?
So we um, we are doing two kind of phase. One is the four tests at HMS, the locker rooms and the offices. And phase two, and phase two is, I would do phase two earlier, but they just couldn't book us right away. They're doing us a favor, giving us the, getting the four tests in. Um, we're doing an additional thirty three tests at each building. There's a whole calculation you have to do to figure out how many tests you, somebody blanks you need. Um, and we went through the map. Anything that's ground level um is what you test. And so we basically went through and circled the map, and we walked the entire building, both buildings, and that's what um you have. And basically, almost every space at Center School is ground level. Is the, I will say, and I just keep repeating this, I put this in my letter, the only number that we have seen, the only test result that we have seen come back that is above four point O is that District Education Office in the girls locker room. The only one.
Thank you.
Right, a little bit on this.
Yeah.
You've had a test that's completed in two thousand seven, eighteen years ago.
Yeah.
And nobody thought to bring this up to anybody at any point at any time to say, this is here, and we should do something about this besides shut the door. I mean.
So I'm right there with you. Um, there's nothing in minutes. We moved, we went back and looked at board agendas. I looked at minutes, and there's nothing. And what I'll tell you is, and I, again, I'm transparent. I'm gonna tell you what it is. The letter, the notification to DPH, when you mitigate something, they said closing the door is an acceptable solution. To me, it's not acceptable, but DPH said so. Um, that letter was sent in two thousand nine. Oh, I can't tell you what happened in those two years. I I don't know if they just closed it right away. I do know that the PE teacher at that time was, had their office in the gym. I'm assuming that they knew that, but this literally came up when I, it's always been a storage area. It's always, the door's always closed a lot, and didn't know.
I know, I'm just disappointed with the lack of, because obviously people on the staff know because they told you. So I, I'm very frustrated with the the lack of communication in that fact that this should have been taken care of at least ever. Um, uh, besides that, though, um, one of the communications on our on our uh agenda is my life. And I've been authorized to say I can, she's not just a community member in this case, she's my life. And she emailed the entire board with extensive back and forth emails with uh Mr. Stevens about um this whole situation, and I just, I find it frustrating that there is almost no slight pat on the side and be like, yeah, I was, I talked about this, and then also a community member brought it up, and we were just, just something along those lines, let everybody know that somebody else communicated about this, and that prompting had me looking into it further because obviously you need to get
That wasn't the reason I was looking into it. She knew it. She knew after I knew.
No, I understand that, but I don't, I I just, I don't think it's I don't think it's fair, and I know this sounds completely out of its sight, but I think that if someone comes forward with this, with you, like, just an acknowledgement of, yep, I knew about that. Uh, I'm glad you reached out. Uh, I'm definitely looking into it if there's any resources you could provide or anything like that.
Yeah.
Just building that kind of community really, I don't, because I saw the, it almost seemed like it almost seemed like you were doing what you could, but there was gonna be a limit to that, and I didn't, I I didn't like the communication. I just, I want more people to participate. I want more people to be able to reach out and and get the response essentially, and I just don't feel that that was there. I I really don't. And again, I know it sounds like I'm all on its side here, but I'm trying to look at it objectively as possible, and I just just want the acknowledgements of people who actually do reach out and do care and do try to provide some kind of information.
Yeah. I totally did that.
I have a couple of comments and questions.
Yeah.
Um, how, you said it was a couple of grand. What are we talking about for the testing?
One twenty five a test within uh initial, and then at twenty five dollars every test after that.
Okay, because I was just
Is fantastic because the first numbers we had were one fifty a test, and then we started calling the list, and the next list uh number was two fifty a test. And when we found A and R and they said one twenty five and twenty five at every test after that, we said check.
Okay.
So our first sixty six, sorry, is one twenty five?
So the, no, the first call two, because it's two separate buildings, is two hundred and fifty dollars, it's one twenty five each, and then the the other
Or twenty five, yeah, sorry.
Sixty four or twenty five.
Okay, yeah, because I was just wondering um about that. Okay, and then um just some like quickie rudimentary research I was doing on radon because I don't know that much about it.
Yeah.
Um, it seems like tests are gonna be, like, numbers are gonna be higher in the wintertime, and if it's been raining a lot, because basically
Why they make you test?
Okay, yeah, my understanding of it is it's like a gas that comes up from the ground that can come in through, you know, cracks in foundations.
Correct.
Um, any walls that are touching any type of ground.
Yeah.
That's why the ground level and stuff.
They mandate, Sam, that you test between October and, I think it's October and March.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I was thinking, I'm like, well, I just did some quickie math of like thirty three sites at seventy five bucks a pop for like those plug ins, some like the radon test that he got. Have you ever seen like the plug in carbon monoxide? It's pretty much that. It tests like parts per million of radon.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm like, all right, well, seventy five bucks times thirty three is twenty four seventy five. I didn't know if that was obviously you'd want like a licensed professional to come and test, but I didn't know if it's just like something we should have.
Required to pick from their list.
Okay.
So our first test that we picked up at the hardware store is just something, it's a test you could do in your home.
Right.
And we did it because we wanted to know ASAP.
Yeah, like a preliminary.
And but that test right now is not a valid test to DPH. You actually have to, like, there's a list for testing folks. They have to go through special certification with the state, and then there's a list of mitigation books, and there are separate lists.
I can't wait to send the bill to that, to them for that.
Yeah, I didn't know if it was, um, because I think they are required to test, what, like ten percent or a certain?
So after you do your initial, So after you do your initial, which I'm assuming it happened at one time and where those results are, I have no idea, which is why I'm starting from scratch. After that, you're three years out, you test ten percent of that total number. So that, and that was my email that I sent, like I couldn't believe the vendor was only testing four or five. I was nervous about that, like why did they do that? That's not in DPH's documentation, but the epidemiologist confirmed that. Um, and she said, we probably need to put that in our, our, our communications. Um, so that would be in year three, unless it's a space that tests above four, you have to test that space every two years.
Okay.
Uh, according to CTDPH, you have to keep the, the records in the main office and in public view, so they can.
Whatever's gonna happen in the office and they're, they're already going up on the website.
The state doesn't wanna copy to prove that they're below, like to monitor. I would have thought we would've done our hand slap for not being tested, but I guess.
So two years after the puzzle, and this is the doc, I have, I think I have four documents that came out from that two thousand seven result. One of the documents was an email back to the superintendent at that time saying, we hear that you have a positive test, we don't hear that, we don't know how you mitigated or what you did. And the response back was a, a fact sheet, which is just a fact sheet and then the DPH sheet that said closed and turned into storage. And DPH approved it.
They were okay with that at the testing.
And I asked, I, I literally asked epidemiologist last week, um, I think that was last week. Can you please tell me if that's an acceptable solution? And she said if it's not occupiable for, for more than two hours, it's an acceptable solution. To me.
Mitigate.
I don't know if they were hurting for money at the time or if it was a fortune. I, I can't speak to any of that. All I can speak to is once I've gotten this data and the information, that started as a rumor, um, because it came from my maintenance custodians. Uh, and I say it's a rumor because I didn't have any data to back it up. There was nothing in my office and he had nothing. So I have to treat it as a rumor, because no one, I, how can I go off of something? So we test. That's our moving board.
The other thing I can say is if it got used as a storage base and was considered a storage base, it does not need to be tested going forward. So I think that's probably why it became a storage base instead of an office, because that doesn't require testing.
It's not occupiable. Right, so any like storage closets, we have a couple of storage closets that are bigger, but if they're not occupied by, which the thirty-three per school would have been larger. But like bathrooms, if someone's not gonna be in a bathroom for more than two hours, you don't have to test that space and they say that you don't have to test into the space. If we find something in a specific area of the building, then I'm gonna say, okay, and I, I don't have any information, I'm just telling you this. We're testing the bathroom, okay, the bathroom around the floor. If that came back with an elevated number, I would wanna test the closet next to it, because we're in and out of that getting materials, even though it's not two hours a day. I would wanna test the bathrooms across the hall. We can do more, but I think we need to get the first, first trumped on.
So would the test cover, like, I'm just trying to understand, so if you've had a test in the bathroom, for example, you'd have to close all the doors and just had in the bathroom and then you'd have to have a different test for the closet or?
So they want you to, yeah, we test different locations. So they, um, want you just to live life but not open the windows. I think that's like normal, like day-to-day operations, just keep going on. Do you leave your door open normally, do your door open? But they don't want windows open. Um, and so that's part of the, as you do the testing, you get the information for that particular location. And, um, they will, there, there's so many uh like blanks and extras that you have to do as well. So it's like a confirmation. So I put two tests in the locker room, PE office, they gotta come back with statistically consistent. They set that up, that that's part of the calculation too. So, but yes, if we need to add more, we could add more and it's something that I think we should do if we find something. I'm hoping this is a fluke. I'm hoping we just have to mitigate one particular area. Uh, and then we move on to our regular testing and ten percent of the number, um, but.
Can you remind me which school this is in?
So it's in a whole school, but we're gonna test in both schools, cuz I don't have the, the baseline data for either school.
And it's in which, which age area?
It's in the gym locker room, so anybody who walks into that space.
So I mean, um, like how old is that area?
Oh, nineteen eighty.
Okay.
Is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, good, okay. Cuz I was concerned about if they had to do remediation, if there was potentially asbestos house.
Asbestos, yeah, we thought about that too.
Alright, good.
I think.
Sixties.
If we, the issue is though, if we have to go into the floor, we're still gonna have to test for asbestos.
In the eighties.
Yep.
Wow.
Because we had found asbestos in nineteen eighty section of the building where it wasn't supposed to be used and you do the testing just to be sure, then you go.
Alright.
Might not be the tile, but it might be the glue.
Yeah.
Something left over around, it's, we, we.
Ceiling tiles like that, that glue too.
Yeah, we, we test if we have to go.
It's such a good material.
Yeah.
Damn, they're carcinogens.
Yeah.
And maybe you remember this too. Recollection back several superintendents, when we used to have someone who oversaw needs across the district. Wasn't called a facility director, it was called something else. And then they retired and because of budgetary reasons, they were not replaced. And I'm wondering if that coincides with maybe when this happened, maybe that person knew that and then when that person left, this is what happens and then we don't have any, because we have custodians and custodians come and go, things like this happen and that's very unfortunate, unfortunate uh consequence of cutting people through budget. Cuz we could have had someone go in that office if this custodian had left.
We would never.
And they had never told us, someone could have got, you know, we could have been having a very worse situation, so. So are we not? I appreciate that things were taken care of. By accident, we found out, but that you've been taking care of them, so thank you.
Yeah, that, the, when that position was, they didn't decide that, they didn't fill the position after that person left and that's why we have stipends now on both buildings. That was the cost savings, so easy position. That was the individual that would have had the records, their name is on the file that I have.
That's concerning to me when people, when we do that, hopefully. If other people leave like that, we can take care of keeping the records now that we have work, that time computers work.
Yeah, uh, it's easier now with computers, but the, the, your point is institutional knowledge is something I'm leaning on right now and I immediately went to the people that have been here longest and said, is there something else I should know about your building? Tell me this, about this space, just started asking questions, because if it doesn't come up, they, it's not.
Especially if we're going to possibly renovations on that building or.
But that'll take all testing. We're gonna see something, Sam.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, are we not communicating well enough with our staff to, I mean, I know sometimes you, things slip your mind, you're like, oh yeah, by the way, but it's like, if we have this knowledge and we have these assets of people who have been working for our district for a while and they know this knowledge and it's just like, oh yeah, by the way, this happened over here and oh yeah, this happened over here, but we don't know. I feel like that's also a detriment.
Yeah.
Potentially. I know there's like a million, potentially a million things you can think of to be like, oh, what about this, what about this? And you've been here so long that you don't really think about it. I don't wanna use that as an excuse, but it just, maybe we need to be considering and I've said this a lot of times with other things of checking in with the employees, checking in with the staff, checking in with the people who are out there, checking in with the teachers, how's the storage going? How's this working for you? You're living it, you're using it every day, checking in with custodians, hey, what's going on with this? Do you prefer carpet or vinyl? You know, like when we're thinking about all these things, we need to kind of like get in the ditches with these people, get in the trenches and see what's going on and talk to them, so. That's concerning to me to be like, well, we have this staff member who knew, they never said anything. Where, why? I don't know. You know what I mean? I don't know if I'm, I don't think I'm overreacting to that, so that was.
I don't know if it's all I knew, I have no idea.
Yeah. Something to consider, like maybe we should be doing some type of checking in or.
Ironically, Sam, this staff member, I'm on the sidewalk with every single morning on Route thirty-two.
Yeah, I have an idea, I know who it is, but.
Probably more, well, and, and I'm not going to figure him at all.
And I'm not trying to either, I'm just saying, maybe, I don't know, more conversations should be had.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the instinct now.
Or maybe developing a new inventory keeping system.
Well, that's what we're doing now.
You know, now that you.
Yeah. It's all going on the website, it's all being filed.
Spreadsheet for.
Yeah.
On the board.
Who are honestly lucky we have the results we had, because we had nothing. Except for twenty twenty-one. And when we reached out to the company, both, both, we said, we don't have anything. And then day later, they're like, actually, we found some stuff and they were able to send this over to it. One of them is just general, it's like spreadsheet numbers and rooms and. We're lucky to have what we have, so.
I'm sorry, I have one more thing on this, so just in the broader sense of the whole lesson here, again, I gotta go back to it. Eighteen years and the solution was to close the door. I mean, that's not, that's kind of a good metaphor for the broad sense of the building as it is, it's abandoned. Instead of, you could have gotten this done in two thousand and nine, like if not, you would at least read. You could have been done in two thousand and nine, which would be in this situation, but we decided to put the brand on it. And here we are, being in a real situation, so it's.
A hundred percent.
It's a really good thing to remember when you're considering these buildings and what to do with them and how this is exactly how doing something that's good enough is not.
Good update.
And budgets and maintenance budgets and so all these things are important. They have money for.
We get there. Okay, can I go to the next gener- generation accountability dashboard, sharing? I shared this with you today, see how small this is. So this just came out, this is typically what, uh, this comes out after all the SPAC stuff, um, comes out. And it's gonna make this bigger. So this is, uh, we talk about progress and what they do is they have these, this accountability index and they give you an overall score, every district gets this. You get a school score, Nick, this will be on the website tomorrow. You also get a, um, district score. So it basically goes through each of the items that, that are listed. Really, items one A through two D are directly linked to high stakes. There are certain things that I will say are out of our control, but we still get scores on them. So like graduation rate, they take the cohorts as they move through and you get a number for it. So even though you don't have a high school in district, you still get scores for that, you're impacted. A kid may have a phenomenal K D career and then go to high school and not do any work. We are the ones that are impacted by that. You can see the state's percent points earned in the last column and then we are the percent points earned. So the seventy-four point two, this is the, really what you're looking at. Their goal is that it is eighty-five or higher for the target. Um, and on the district accountability graphic there, you can see the increase. That's been our, our biggest jump that we've had since COVID, um, on the, obviously, within side, state side is on the left. If you look at the school side, center schools accountability results, they were at a seventy-six point one. Um, and getting against, just based upon the percentage of points that you get. And again, this is everything from, uh, high stakes testing, chronic absenteeism, which is why we look at our, why we look at our attendance so closely. I find it so interesting, you know what our attendance looked like last year and the number of kids that we had that were chronically absent and, but we got a hundred percent of the points. I, just sometimes this stuff is baffling to me, I just don't, that doesn't make sense to me, I, but it's there, we get a hundred percent of the points. They also look at high need students, which high needs could be special education, um, it, it could be, uh, pre-produced. Uh, it could be a lot of things, but the seventy-six point one, again, if you look at the graphic for center school of where they were, and that's, uh, looking at center school and compared to district level, center school coming out of COVID was not so hot and you can see that those jumps there over the last couple of years since twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, um, is on the right track. Same thing with hall, halls was, there weren't as deep, but you can see their accountability index, seventy-three point four, what their number was. The ones where there's, uh, stars or they're blanks, there are actually numbers there. They just can't report them cuz our population is so small, um, that they don't disclose all those things, because you could actually almost figure out who that applied to. I see that on my EdSite secure side, this is on the public side. Again, I'm not gonna put that up for everybody, because it's not public. But again, you look at the, the graphic of the growth, uh, hall schools was in that five range. This is the state's attempt, uh, at accountability that goes beyond just high stakes testing. Um, and so, you know, your target's still eighty-five, um, that's, that's what everyone's target is. And so this is one of the things we look at for chronic absenteeism, what are our physical fitness, uh, you know, what we've, were achieving there, it's not great either. Uh, and so that's something that we look at with our PE teachers. And you got SPAC in there, he's got a bunch of stuff. So questions about anything on the, on the accountability index?
How's the PE side, sorry, sorry, the PE side, I was actually staring at that. How do they come up with the numbers?
So they actually look at the number of students that pass the physical fitness test.
Okay.
Um, and then assign points based upon the number of kids that achieved it.
Is this out of, I know they have their target, but is it in reality out of a hundred? You understand what I'm trying to ask?
So I do, and the answer is it depends. There's some that their target is, is out of a hun- a hundred percent, some of the target is ninety-four percent. So if you achieve a ninety-four percent, you get a hundred percent of the points, if that makes sense. It, it, do you understand what I'm saying? They have coded, they put value on certain items that are higher. So if you look at, um, which again is, is an interesting look at it.
Yeah, this is what the state is giving the target. That's, this is what they're calling an average target. Right?
They're basically saying, so I'll give you the example. If you look at the, um, this is how they are, want growth more than they want, uh, overall achievement for SPAC. Look at, uh, one D for hall school. One D is math performance index, high need students. They want a target of seventy-five, right? We earned thirty-eight point nine of those points, the max points is fifty, so we earned seventy-seven percent of the points. To me, like that should be a hundred. Why would the target be seventy-five? Why would we lower that standard?
Yeah, that's my question is, is, has this, so we've, we've gotten a lot of lack about our goals being um, for our, I'm trying to think of another word, give me a second, um, aiming for targets versus aiming for achievement, focusing on growth versus focusing on excellence.
Yeah, achieve.
You know what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, growth versus.
So that's what I'm asking, is this, this, I don't know if I just can't understand what the hell I'm looking.
Look at the growth, look at the growth one, two A.
But are they purposefully, so this is Connecticut is telling us these things.
Yes, they want students to be growing. If you look at two A through two D,
It feels like it hinders.
The target is a hundred percent. I, I'm gonna be honest with you, like this is a score, but we, our data along the way is, we're paying more attention to that, because we know long-term our data internally is gonna be impacted here, long-term. But I'm not going, I'm not cheering, we got ninety-two percent of the points on the map performance index for all students, the target was seventy-five, we earned forty-six, max points is fifty and we got ninety-two percent of the points. I'm not cheering about that. That's, I, I didn't set this up. All I can tell you is this is their, this is their accountability index. I have to show you this. This is what's on the website.
But yeah, how are they coming up with these numbers? Cuz it's like, for example, hall school number seven, on track to high school graduation, that should be a hundred, you should have a goal of every, every student getting done. You know what I mean? So it's like, why is it, it, it's, it's frustrating because.
But why is it ninety-four percent?
Yeah, and it's like.
Shouldn't it be a hundred?
Yes.
I don't disagree with you.
You know what I mean? Like certain things, like it's almost like they're trying to force you into mediocrity. And saying that, this is still good, but these are metrics for you, like let's just keep dumbing it down, dumbing it down, dumbing it down.
Again, this is why. Right, I will use this for the growth scores, but we already get that out of our S back scores. We can see the growth kids make, that's important to us to make sure they're on the right trajectory to to catch up, that's important to us. And they've got that one right, but it's out of a hundred percent.
I just wanna make sure that we're not. I understand there's cer- certain mandates that we have to follow this and oh, and look at this, we're, you know. People in an office and let's come up with this cool chart and look at these things and look at these numbers and this percentage of this and we're. Reading baseball statistics, so it's like fifty percent of the time, if you hit the ball, you're in the, you know, M V P, but. I just wanna make sure that we're not um. Using this as a hindrance of something like, I understand, okay, let's look at it, they're forcing us to put our data into here, okay? This is great, look at the flow chart, oh, look at the growth, I I don't want to.
They do this, by the way, I didn't do this.
Yeah, I just don't want to, uh, and I appreciate data and I appreciate.
I spent no time.
You know, seeing where we are in regards to other things, it's just, I don't want that to just be like the ending. Like, well, look at, we did good, we went from sixty eight to seventy four, but it's still just average, but there's growth, so let's celebrate this. You know what I'm trying to say?
Yeah.
I don't know if I'm wording it, go quickly, but. It's good to look at, but I don't, I don't care.
Is the state the average of the state?
The average of the state, correct.
Is that the average of all the schools in the state?
State average, yeah.
Oh, we're above average, we're above state average, which is.
We are.
Yeah, but their state average is trash, and that's what I'm getting upset about.
Yeah.
I, a- and I think that's my point, like this, if you change things internally, our our day-to-day assessments. And and I think this is what you're saying, their var on overall achievements is not very high.
Right, yeah.
And they're showing that by saying that overall achievement for one A through one F, the target is seventy five. And you get ninety percent of the points if you only get forty six.
Right, so you're already, you're already starting at seventy five, which is three quarters of a hundred, so you're already at a C plus.
And then they do the max at fifty.
Then you're, okay, so now we're less than half, which is half of a half already, you know what I'm trying to say?
The other. Yeah.
That's how I'm looking at it, so I'm like, I don't, I, it's frustrating that this is what they're setting us up for, or trying to.
Yeah. Well, I think, I think everybody, I don't, I shouldn't speak for everybody, but I I feel like the. What I have certainly heard um and experienced is that. It's, this is just something that we have to look at and. Our goal is to get way past this, to just look at our own data, our own internal stuff.
Yeah.
And compare ourselves to ourselves and continue to get better.
Yeah. This is how they compare us to others. That's.
I understand that, but.
And what they're trying to do is look at something beyond S back, so they added in the attendance piece, they added in physical fitness. They have added in those things, so it's not just one measure.
I understand that, and I I don't want to just be judged off of S back and the other ones, I'm very, been very vocal about that.
Not saying it's right. Yeah. Yeah.
So I'm not, I appreciate that they're trying to throw in some other things that are very important for. Students and future citizens to do like attendance, well, you can't just not show up to your job, you're gonna get fired.
Yeah.
You're, nobody's gonna hire you, you can't not just show up in life, you're not gonna be successful with anything you do. So I do appreciate that there's other metrics they're doing, just not just the standardized tests, I think that's good, but. It's frustrating to look at this for somebody who cares about trying to get.
Make change, that's.
Excellence, and we're like, well, there you go, fifty, sixty percent is good for this, good enough, you know.
With a high bar. Let me move on to the attendance, because I'll show you, this is a prime example, like when I move on to the attendance piece. This is why, like, they've got one line to it and we're looking at every month, right? Uh, I think I'm blocked, how many targeted school early dismissals after three P M, we added that column, by the way. Uh, absences, let me blow this up for you. I'm gonna do one side and I'll do the other, so you can see. Right, what absences look like in October at center school compared to August, September. And then this right here, this October, we have five kids, uh, sorry, twenty two kids with five absences or more already. You know who those kids are, there's already attendance letters out, there's already communications going out. Um, there's gonna be, this is gonna be in the digital backpack on Friday, because I ever shared this with the administrators, like you. People need to pay attention, we take, we get hurt on these things and every day your child's out of school. I'm not picking on someone who's sick, that's not what I'm talking about, but if you're taking a vacation now, this hurts, your child is missing learning.
That's what I was gonna ask, are these excused absences, like if someone wanted to take.
They are a lot.
A week off of Columbus Day or whatever.
All of the nine, there's the first nine absences, that's the law, the way they made the law.
Okay, that's right.
And all we can say is thanks for letting us know.
When do you report to the state? Sorry, it's a little bit of discretion, isn't it?
What do you mean?
You have to report to a state, to the state at a certain point, don't you?
Didn't, we have to report all the numbers at the end of the year, a number of kids.
Oh, okay.
Absences, sure.
Okay.
Yeah, we're obligated to send out, uh, you know, we send out attendance letters when they cert- hit a certain number. We do, we start with, I think we have a five absence letter, just to let them know, like, you're already at five. Uh, you only have nine, everything after nine, they need a doctor's note or it's unexcused, after so many unexcused. We have to contact D C F, it's like, there's, uh, we have obligations, and so.
Were there, um, and I know you could spend. A life searching through data, but were there a lot of, like for some absences, were there, um? Do you think that there's situations where there's like a half of a day and then because it's already a half of a day, if you're an hour late, you're just, it counts as a. Absence, like is that such a thing?
No, you have to be in school for fifty percent of the time.
Right.
For to count for you in attendance.
That's what I'm saying, like if you have a scheduled half a day.
Yep.
Like, did we, did we have a lot of half a days or do we ever have?
Oh, no, the the half day is, it's half of a half of a day.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so if if, let's say. You get, you're already a parent who drops off late for whatever reason.
Yeah.
And then you have a half a day, so you get dropped off at nine and you're there till ten and then dismissed, dismissed at eleven and then dismissal at twelve. And then you gotta get picked up because you don't have anyone to take you off the bus, so your grandma comes.
Yeah.
I, you know what I'm trying to say?
You're saying, are they, uh, there's not a lot of kids like that, no, no.
Okay.
Now, this, the typically the the absence that we're seeing, they're obviously full day absences. The things that we're looking at are those early dismissals and you can see. The, there's a lot of early dismissals, they're still counted in attendance.
Right.
So of those fifty three kids. In hall school that were, had an early dismissal, thirteen of those were after two P M, so I'm gonna knock that number down to forty now. Four, those forty kids were counted as in attendance that day in school. But they may have only been in school for three hours and thirty one minutes, one minute beyond. What's required to be in school. That's why we watch thoroughly dismissals, is it a pattern, is it just, uh, you know, a random orthodontist appointment? We watch that stuff.
Um, one of the, I'm I'm trying to think, I appreciate the numbers for sure, and one of the things that I'm trying to think about is how we use this to. Boost the conversation, I guess, because. Um, attendance should be a priority definitely, but if it's, if. Like us telling people that or someone telling someone that is not necessarily the reason that they're going to prioritize attendance.
Yeah.
Um, I, one of the uh effective things that I feel like. Happened at the beginning of the school year was those uh coffee with the principal or whatever it was called. Um, and I think there's some value in getting feedback from those informal conversations. About attendance and how would you have a conversation with a parent about. The importance of school and scheduling appointments and I say that as I think about my son had an appointment at two o'clock for his eyes and I am so sorry. Um, that's the first we get, but um. And there's obviously a different conversation for for other things, um. And to to sum up a a very short story that could have been short is, um, how can we use this information? Like, I feel like one of our our conversations should be how we use this information to improve it, um.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's in our goals, it's in our, it's my admin team, it's in their goals to improve attendance. And that requires any of our social work staff, any mental health support staff, is in connection with families on a regular basis. Same thing with our nurses, someone doesn't call in, they're, you know, they're they're sick for multiple days, we know those things. Um, it's that ongoing thing, it's the vacation after you're sick for five days that puts you over. The number of days, it's really trying to avoid those things, I think the best proactive thing that I've seen, actually Alicia brought it in. Um, because we had a lot of conversation about this attendance this summer. Is it, it was basically a handout and I think she sent it out. It was basically, if you don't read by the third grade, if you miss X number of days and you're not reading by third grade. Here's the impact of of your chances in the future, it's, it was significant, right, so the more days you missed and there was a correlation. It's stuff like that, it's getting it, you know, right in family's faces to to help them understand how important it is. We also don't want kids to go home, i- if you look at the center school one, I can tell you right now, they had some illness sweep through. In October, I mean, there, we watched it, um. So it's just a matter of making sure if it's illness, stay home. But if it's not, we need you in school and that's where we reach out, that's our problem.
I have a quick comment about that too, and I feel like I've asked this before, but I don't remember the answer, so I'm sorry, um. I really think that. Not to be pessimistic, but people who. Aren't potentially concerned about. Attendance, I think that if we say, look, it's messing up our scores, they're not gonna care, like people care what happens to them. So are there any ramifications that we're allowed to do, like I remember when I was going to school, we'd be trained with like, well, you have to have so many days or you're gonna stay behind. Like, do we keep kids behind anymore? Are we allowed to? I know there's that no child kept behind or no child left behind thing, but it's like. This is going to affect you or summer school or are we doing anything, or it's like, eh, call D C F, I don't care, or I'll do this, do that, like, or is is there anything actually happening?
Yeah.
To get people to be like, listen, this is gonna happen, you can read a pamphlet and be like, okay, well. You're gonna. Be flipping burgers, you know what I mean? Like, I don't think people really care about that. I could be wrong, but, you know, what's the ramification of not doing this? Inconvenience, you have the inconvenience, you know what I mean?
It's sometimes inconvenience is not, it's, we don't wanna be inconveni-
And I know everybody's different and I'm not trying to be a jerk about it, but. I just feel like there's not enough ramifications for action sometimes.
I just wrote down that, that probably would be a good presentation for you to hear from our mental health staff. Uh, and administrators, just so you can see what strategies they put in place, the thing, house visits, like what are they doing?
And I'm not trying to be, I don't, I hope that I didn't come up as being, um.
No.
Grass or being like, oh, you know, come, you know.
Then you know they're baggage trucks.
And not thoughtful that people have struggles, I I hope that it didn't come off that way, I'm just saying, like, what are we gonna do? You know, I don't know how you, how you, like you were saying, like, how do you inspire people to care about these things?
I think it's helpful to hear about what an attendance meeting consists of, not like exactly, but.
Yeah.
You know, what parents are presented with, and if there's things that. Um. I don't know, could be done to support the outcomes of those meetings.
Uh, from a positive. Different perspective. For the kids, um, my districters had, for years had a lot of trouble with absenteeism. And some of the things they've done, it's like some. Competitions, you know, for the month, um. One time they had the door and they, the kids would, for every day they had. You know, perfectly tense in the classroom, they got to put, build a part of a snowman.
Yeah.
Another time was just on the announcements, every day it would be, last year for, they would call out, um. You know, in grade one, the highest attendance was this class for this day and the next day it would be a different class. And then the kids kind of get in a competition and then there's some kind of a classroom award. You know, ones that win to kind of build, the then the kids are on like, I don't wanna miss school today, I wanna go to school because I wanna help my class.
Yeah.
From that perspective for the kids, I mean, they can't help it completely if they're parents, but it does add some incentive.
We were posting um the percentage of kids in school, we just put percentage up from in school, I don't know if they're still doing it, they were. So the kids can see how many, you know, we're ninety six percent today, we have two hundred thirty two kids out of, you know, it had a number of.
Make them do math, I like it.
Kind of either grade level or classroom competition kind of things.
I can have them pull together a quick presentation, just because I think it's a good thing to see um and hear. It also tells you where you, it's, you know. Your policy only goes so far. And it's, it's a mandate from the state.
Should our policy be looked at, it's from twenty twenty?
Is the.
May eleventh, twenty ten.
I I can't tell you that, I'm telling.
No, I'm telling you. Five one one, three point two, A.
No, 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 I'm I'm telling you, I don't know, I don't know when the nine went in, that's changed. What's the name of the policy?
Uh, I'm looking at the truancy policy, introduction and definitions, remediation of truancy, it's not probably that policy.
Okay. Maybe an attendance policy, I can look at that.
Just figured it's important to talk about it.
Okay. Can I move along?
Yes.
Um, I had one other, and he was in the audience tonight, but I I don't think he wants all sorts of uh praise. Um, the company Falcon uh donated fifteen hundred dollars to support the hall school trout program. We get trout each year to raise trout, um, and they were providing funds to enhance the equipment setup. Uh, we've had it for few years and we can make it better and there are.
You said trout, right?
Trout.
I didn't know, but.
We have a fish tank that's massive and they raise trout, it's like they have to do P H of the water, they do all sorts of things. Uh, and we actually do a trout release into the Atlantic River. And uh, it came through a grant years ago. And uh, this parent reached out to me and said, do you have any STEM funding needs? Uh, and I said, let me talk to uh my team. Uh, and they came back with that, that as this, an extension of that, to make it better. Uh, and they're fully funding a field trip for that grade level that works on that project, I think it's. Cobah, Cobah, I I can't remember.
Wayback?
Okay, wherever it is, um, they have a trout hatchery. And the kids are gonna get to go and see the trout hatchery, uh, and just as an extension of the learning. And yeah, like positive stuff, the kids love going down to the river and releasing the trout, I mean, they take them from.
What grade is it?
Uh, I believe it's seventh grade.
Hasn't happened yet, has it? Because I am not a.
All this is tiny, they, it takes time, it takes months, yeah, yeah, it takes a lot of time, like, and they have to keep the tank dark, there's a lot of, a lot to it.
Do they come in at little tiny waves at first? My mind is just full, I can't read it.
Okay, so, so you don't know about the trout piece, so I can, we can do a quick.
See, that's institutional knowledge right there, though.
Trout piece, okay. So again, thank you to that parent for asking, reaching out, and thanks to Falcon for thinking of hall school. Um, we are the kids and the whole school staff, I didn't think, you know.
Okay.
Uh, I think it's more powerful from them. And just appreciated, like they just asked, no application, got the idea, sent the email, next thing you know, there's a fifteen hundred dollar check, so. It's very, very welcome, appreciate that. Financial report?
I'm in financial report.
Hang on.
Oh.
I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry, I. I have something that's not gonna fit in anywhere, this is probably the best spot for it and other, because it kind of looks a little same, but if you don't mind.
Sure.
Um, so can we just go back to the attendance report real quick, uh, uh, for center, and so there were three more kids. Uh, what grades are they in?
Oh, that, in fourth.
Yes.
One of them was fourth grade, that's what you're asking?
Yes, I am.
Uh, I can't tell you, it was off the top of my head and.
I think there was two in fourth grade.
I think there was two in fourth grade too.
That I don't know off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
The only reason I bring that up is because we put four of these. Uh, teachers to go in there and I.
Yeah.
It's already, again, paying off because that created out has two more kids and I think it was a really good thing that we did.
Yeah.
Um, that. The other thing I do wanna bring up, because it ties into testing, um, so if anybody has the chance to re-watch. E O's board meeting from Thursday, um, their director of English, Steph Holland, she did a presentation, um, and the reason I bring it up. Is she did a. is she did a presentation on P S A T data, a part of the presentation, in- included P S A T data for eighth and ninth graders. And the performance levels of the, of the school, the kids took it with seventy percent. And I bring that up because she then went on to tie it into eye ready testing. And the eye ready testing put out that the, it's consistent with the P S A T testing at seventy-three percent pets on or above grade level. Um, so, when I say things like standardized testing is important and, and this testing is going to lead forward and it's going to like, these eye rate tests are important, these S fact tests are important, because it, it can pay in the future. Just by happenstance, she gives this presentation and shows, I mean, it's a three percent difference, but it's, in the grand scheme, it's pretty accurate that how they perform on these tests is an indicator of how they perform on standardized tests in the future. Um, and it's a, it's just a step right now. She just implemented B I ready to do a comparison and showed how she could break it down as far as the common core standards that all needs to be worked on. Um, but it was a fantastic presentation and it kind of reinforces why I harp on testing as much as I do. Um, there is correlations in the future and there is correlation to important tests in the future and granted, at the S A T, you don't get it's not something that colleges are gonna look at, but it's a step to the S A T, which colleges aren't gonna look at.
Is she doing a correlation between those two things, the P S A Ts and the S A Ts?
Well, it just happened to be that she was able to take the, the information that she got from the P S A Ts and then uh, they ended up doing, choosing, choosing eye ready as their testing metric for those grades. And the testing that they've done so far with eye ready is consistent with how they score on the P S A Ts, it was crazy to see.
Who's?
Eye ready.
No, no, go ahead.
Eye ready, at high school level.
Yep.
Okay.
This all, the English doing, who's doing eye ready at high school?
Um, so this, this presentation only focused on ninth grade.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if she's doing it for all of her grades, I'm not sure, but this, this particular part, because it tied into the P S A T, she just wanted to tie it.
Who did that?
Her name's Steph Holland, she's our new director of English, fantastic person. But it was a great, it was, alright, it's a pretty quick part of the meeting, uh, you can probably watch it in ten minutes, but it's definitely worth a watch.
I will find out, um, about the grade four answer. You guys probably know that.
Yeah, and it's pretty short, it was two.
I don't know that I'll, I'll look great, um, but I've already talked to Lisa and, uh, asked to have some sort of, uh, not a presentation, but update of how that's going. I already, I already have some information how it's going with small groups and things like that and intervention. Um, I think it's working the way we intended it, based upon what I've been getting feedback from, but I wanna give it some time. Um, and so she's, I've already put the bug in Lisa's ear to, to say, we've gotta share something in December about what we're seeing, how's it going, what are the groups look like, you know, making sure it's what you intended it to be, so.
Can I include some feedback about how the teachers feel about it?
Yes, yes, I think they'd love to do that, actually.
Just because we've had some different-
Yes.
I've heard positive feedback from the student side, so.
Uh, I have heard positive feedback from teachers, but the, the team is, is functioning very well and fast. If you know what I mean, sometimes it takes time to connect, and it's already, which is great, so.
Anything else before?
Thank you, sorry.
No, sure, that's fine, um, number nine financial report.
Okay.
We broke, okay, thanks.
So this is the November tenth, uh, financial report, um. I don't want stuff applied, non-lapsing funds for great, three teachers applied, remember that, we would said that forty thousand wouldn't be applied if we had funds at the end there, I will tell them that. And then we encumbered funds for great work with long-term substitute, so you can see the depth that right now at center school with that funding. I will tell you that the, uh, this encumbered funds for the fourth grade long-term substitute. My question was on the seed application. I fully expect that position is going to be fully funded by the, sorry, seed? Seed, by the seed grant, the seed grant is still not open. We'll get the application soon, but, so that will help that number that's in a deficit right now come down, okay? Uh, program two, type of ones that are applied yet, we covered funds from the part-time, uh, P E teacher, she's new, uh, and some supplies and building maintenance items. Uh, program three, uh, we had, we, I asked Donna to, even though we haven't gotten the excess cost yet, I asked her to apply some money and because it looked like it was a six hundred thousand dollar hole, so she's applied a portion of the excess costs, it's not all of it. Um, and then she also hasn't applied the hundred thousand dollars in non-lapsing yet. So, um, there's probably another hundred and ten, hundred and fifteen that we'll get from excess costs, so that's two seventy-five right there. Uh, that'll take the special ed program out of the hole, which would be great. Again, today, today.
Here's a winner.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
You didn't get these copies, or did you?
I don't have that one.
Is that something we should be, um?
I have, I have, there's an extra one too, actually, I'm sure she would find you.
Yeah.
I, I threw like eighty-five things at her today, so she was like trying to email you guys.
I read twenty-four, twenty-five, but that's.
Oh, sorry, yeah, this is the twenty-five.
Yeah, I don't know.
This is the twenty-five current one. Our current, you don't have?
No, no, I go by the new ten.
Yes, November tenth. Transportation, no change. Okay, I was looking for the more breakdown like last year's.
Oh, right, I did have those.
There's more lines on our, on our.
Yeah, the health services, what I'll tell you is it shows that there's three thousand dollars remaining. And we have a, a nurse who's out on leave, and so I expect that, that, that program is gonna be six thousand dollars in the hole. That is after supplies and things, so it's, it's you, you have to, it's what it's, it is what it is, thank you, John, I agree.
A deficit because we have to-
Pay for a sub nurse to be in there, and if that person has sick, if they have sick days, you pay their sick days.
Okay. Yeah, and they'll be correct.
Yeah, the way it works.
I have a question real quick about, uh, special education.
Yeah.
Is that something that we should be trying to, um, talk with Tammy Nuccio about, or Senator Gordon about, um, would they be advocates for us for that, uh, reimbursement from the state?
She knows.
Yeah, what's going on with that?
They both know, they both know, so the I don't know where it went south, but the additional money that they, the state put in, the thirty million dollars was not done well. If we could have just have applied that to outplacement, it would have helped us, right? We've ha- actually had a good reason to use it for something else, but there are districts, districts that have received over a million bucks. And they have to be creative how they're gonna spend that money, because you can't use it on third party, which is out placements. You can't offset current teachers you already had in your budget, you can only hire new. Or you can buy testing supplies.
No, I meant how, um, they're mandated to pay up to ninety percent or whatever.
So, that's the other part of this, so, they started with the thirty million, and now they're going back and pushing back to say you need to fully fund the special education reimbursement excess cost grant.
Yeah.
They know that, um, you can keep saying that, that they know that, um, they know that it can't be based upon, if they do it based upon their budget number and suddenly we have new kids and then we can't change it, it, it's not in a small ten million dollar budget, which is small for, for most districts. We get a, a, you know, two hundred thousand dollar outplacement and it hurts. So, they know that, um, we're expecting seventy percent reimbursement, if we get eighty, it helps us even more. But it has been inconsistent from the state, we're just making sure that it's, um.
I know that, I didn't know if we should be, you know, trying to-
You always can do that.
Close some people, not literally, but like.
I think the more Tammy Jeff here about, we need to make sure reimbursement is there for special education, the more they hear, the better.
I thought that was a mandate they were, I thought that was a law, and they're just picking and choosing like, yeah. Feel like seventy, that's what I'm saying, like, how do we fight for that, how do we fight for that representation? Where that's out of our hands.
Preaching us for years, because it's been a law for years.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
You said, you said seventy, haven't we gotten seventy?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought we were in like sixties or-
We were in the sixties for one year, and then we got, they, they gave a boost, yeah.
Still twenty percent, I'm all right.
For years.
Yeah, it's like, what are you talking about that?
I, they know the formula's broken too, because there are some very wealthy communities
Yes.
that don't struggle with their budgets, they can just raise their middle rate at one point and they can build a new building, right? Um, it needs to be reviewed again and they just are struggling to figure out, it's just like, um, excess costs and ECS funding. Those two things, they're trying to figure out and doing a new form, it's not easy.
Well, I knew that we, it seems like we really hyper fixated on like the, um, Tammy with the reimbursement for the, um,
Yeah.
building or renovation, so I didn't know if it needed that level of enthusiasm, be like, this is all, so, you know, been a problem for a very long time.
She, she's communicating with me on that, yeah, yeah, she's asked about outplacements, yes. Um, for the most part, six through nine is pretty straightforward, minimal change. Um, I will say that Donna and I've been pressing this, uh, and you'll see this why in a second, they they really control program nine with all the insurance, because they move people in and out, if someone new comes in and they take insurance, they've gotta update those numbers, I, it can't, it doesn't come out of my office.
Program ten?
Yes, program ten, so, they have already updated program ten for us based upon our current staff. And so, right now, with that being reconciled, we have about fifty thousand dollars in insurance funds. Um, and then the unemployment, there's currently pennies on the dollar that we're paying out, if, if we don't have to pay anymore, there's money there. Same workers' comp, same thing, that's where it's like, you have to budget for it and you hope you don't have to use it, but it could come up. Social Security tax, we have to pay a certain amount of money, um, if you hire people, people at a lower rate, the new person coming in is making fifty thousand versus ninety thousand, you're paying less tax. So, this program has bounced back a little bit and it's helping us. I'm gonna keep on this program, you know, because it's kind of, I feel like it's just like special ed, uh, that those updates need to be there. There's one other thing in there, that's the, uh, the TSA, tax shelter annuity, that's in this program, and it's part of the contract, but if an employee does not set it up, I'm not paying the TSA, they have to set it up, so if they wait till March to set it up, that's when they finally get a payments, the payment starts in March. There are some people that they just haven't set it up, so that money's not encumbered right now and I let the union know, that's all I can do, I can't set up a TSA for them. Um, so there's some funds that, you know, I hold my breath on, because right now it obviously shows that we're in the hole thirty-seven thousand, we're not, because of the grants. Um, but I'm watching the budget, because this, this is very tight right now.
Are you thinking of freeze at all, or you're trying to do your best to not do that?
I'm not, because of the seed money, um, because of the non-lapsing funds being not applied yet, and knowing that we're gonna get a higher, or we have more money coming in for excess costs, but I'm watching stuff. The other thing that you don't see out of this is the drip grant. The drip grant is that new grant that they created, it does not come out of C S D E. It comes out of another branch, uh, D A S, whatever D A S's new name is. Um, there's supposed to be an application for that, so we've already fixed a few things for in the four to six thousand dollar range. That is billed to this right now, that will then could be taken off of this and paid by the drip grant.
What does that stand for, is that-
A great question, they, it's another acronym they came up, it's, it's, uh, maintenance related, fixes like-
Okay, that's all, I don't care about the word, but.
Yes.
Makes me think of comments.
Yeah.
So every, all this, I just had a superintendent's meeting last week, we're saying, anybody see that, knowing about seed application or drip applications, and no, and no, so we're waiting. Um, so those will be some reclassifications, once they come in, if we have mitigation projects, guess what, the drip grant can be used. I don't think it can be used for testing, but, so.
District repair and improvement project.
Thank you.
Random question about the fringe stuff, um, since we have union employees, does a union cover fiduciaries and audits for the TSAs, or is that part of our, our responsibility as the employer? Do you know what I'm talking about?
We put in our three percent to match and it's on them to maintain. We are only responsible to do the deposit to match and that's it.
Okay.
It's on them to-
It's under the union, okay.
It's not even under the unions, it's under the employee.
Yeah, but I know with certain, um, when you have retirement plans, sometimes you have to pay for it to be audited, to make sure that you're providing the best, um, option of investments to your employees.
State that's, it is for the teachers.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
So that might be a evaluation thing that we have to do, because that, that's the type of retired teacher's evaluation, that we just pay fifteen grand for.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
And if it's somebody with like a four oh three B, the private company would do it.
Okay, I was making sure.
Yeah, the teacher retirement piece is part, is connected to the valuation, we just paid fifteen thousand eight hundred dollars for it.
Yeah, I don't know how it works for unions and stuff like that, I would ask.
The next one, now that you have, is now we're on to final twenty-four, twenty-five. Okay, final budget report from Donna. Remember that you have programs that they cannot be in, in, have a zero on them at the end, so the next thing I want to give you is the transfers. We did our end of the year spending on projects, signs, things like that, so if you look at where the overs are, I'm gonna go through these individually. Program one, the overage was in building maintenance for the playground servicing, so that's why it's in the hole. Program two, you had overage for overs, uh, high proceeding, the gym floor and stage were finishing. We have a school zone beacon system, we have a P E salary that was higher, and computer supplies and equipment that went over by we bought some chromes, okay? Um, three, overages in, uh, special ed salary, homeless transportation and school choice. Notice, it does not say outplacement, because we have received that bump from the state. Right? Four, balance after prepaying, uh, on that multi-year, uh, contract in twenty-three, twenty-four, there was some money left over. Reasonable balance in five, six, balance was in contractual conferences and workshops, which you have to have in the budget, and it, because it's in the contract. Um, seven, there was overage in heating oil and electricity, we used more. Um, eight, the balance from the unfilled facilities position, considered eighty-five thousand. Nine, there was an overage after prepaying dues for cave and caps, homebound instruction and five oh four maintenance and repairs. And then ten was the one that jumped back, this is what I was just talking about, savings from health insurance and under budget on unemployment and social security tax, she had a couple of those. Um, and so I've asked Donna now, like, I want those updated more frequently, because that's a big adjustment. Some of it, you don't know, because again, hiring, right, some of it you don't know, uh, based upon insurance. We actually budget for actual what we believe we're going to pay out based upon contracts and, and people that are taking insurance when we budget. If someone wages it after that, great, so your balance is one thirty-one, seven thirty-six, one point three percent of your budget was remaining. The next item is this, and I'm just doing this all together, if that's okay. Is the transfers, you again cannot have a program in the negative. So what Donna has done here for you is given you budget transfer requests, um, the two line and where it's all coming out of fringe, and so you have to transfer each of these individually, seventy thousand eight twenty-five to program one, forty-six thousand twenty-six to program two, and basically what that will do is give you this document, which I don't think I gave you, uh, because I don't think I need to. It basically just says, balance remaining, one dollar, zero, there's nothing in the negative, does that make sense? And we did this, when I came in, it wasn't like this, and I didn't like this being the final picture, because it doesn't paint what actually happened, and I think that's not transparent. So we publish this document, but we also publish this document to show people where the money actually did go, and where there was balances, so both would, would, would get published. So what you need to do is you need to vote to make these transfers. vote to make these transfers so the business office can put those programs back to zero.
Alright, so. I moved the Wellington Board of Education transfer two hundred and fifty thousand nine hundred thirty dollars from program ten to the following programs. Program one, the amount of seventy thousand eight hundred twenty five dollars. To program two, the amount of forty six thousand twenty six dollars. To program three, the amount of ninety nine thousand five hundred sixty three dollars. To program seven, the amount of thirty thousand ninety six dollars. Into program nine, the amount of twelve thousand four hundred and twenty dollars.
Second.
Thank you, Arthur and John. Any more discussion?
I added it twice just to be sure.
Alright, all those in favor, uh please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Cute. So that would be back to zero now. Your next item is your one thirty three for non-lapsing. That's your next item. So Donna's suggestion, she sent basically this this as a memo. Let me explain what your non-lapsing fund is, okay? So you cannot deposit, you cannot exceed two percent of your total budget into this account. That's a hundred ninety five thousand three hundred eighty four dollars, okay? Your work policy, you cannot exceed three percent in your total account. So that's three hundred thousand four hundred forty three. Invisions. The end of the year program you had left was one hundred thirty one thousand seven hundred thirty five dollars. If you do the math here from the unaudited bound fund balance twenty five, twenty six, she added the interest of five thousand in there. She's taking out the hundred thousand that you've already got in there for the offset for outplacement tuition. The ending balance that she's forecast is a hundred and thirty four thousand seven hundred twenty eight dollars. That's what she believes is in non-lapsing as of this date. She's basically saying the maximum allowable transfer is a hundred and sixty five thousand. That would get you to that three hundred thousand dollar number. You're under that, which means you have the ability, if you want, to transfer the one hundred and thirty one thousand seven hundred thirty five dollars balance remaining from twenty four, twenty five into your non-lapsing account. My suggestion is you do that because you are already looking at paying some of those things and it will allow you to continue hopefully another hundred thousand dollar non-lapsing fund transfer or offset in your twenty six, twenty seven budget for outplacement tuition.
What is the end amount?
So your.
Do you wanna know if we transfer at all?
Yes.
Two hundred and sixty six thousand four hundred and sixty three dollars.
Thank you.
No problem.
Arthur, can you say this again?
Two hundred and sixty six thousand four hundred and sixty three dollars.
And that will be the balance.
That would be the balance if we move it all, according to Donna's estimate.
Correct.
Now, Phil, you had said thirty five and our paper says thirty six. What would the official number be?
Tell me what you're looking at.
Um, I'm looking at the total at the bottom, the balance remaining, one thirty one, seven thirty six. So if I were to make a motion, should it be thirty six or thirty five? This is on the October thirtieth summary, final report, oh yeah.
There's a one dollar difference. She might be rounding and so I would I would trust Donna's motion on this non-lapsing thing over what's on the.
And go with the six, okay?
No, I would go with five.
Five, okay.
Yeah, I would go with five. I just I.
Okay. Are we ready for a motion?
Okay.
Okay, I move that we the Wellington Board of Ed deposit one hundred thirty one thousand seven hundred and thirty five dollars into the non-lapsing fund year.
From?
From the two thousand twenty four, twenty five budget, money remaining from the two thousand twenty four, twenty five budget. One second. Any more discussion about this? Alright, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 I have a quick question about um. Some of these programs, if I may.
Which one?
With the balance. So for the first one, as I'm having a lapse in my memory, did I use the?
We talking about this current year or last twenty four, twenty five?
I'm talking about, I'm looking at the octo uh twenty four, twenty five, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay, so is this? Never mind. I guess one thing I did wanna say is um. I know we have that godforsaken Siemens thing that I hate.
Yeah.
Uh, are you aware that Eversource does some rebates for different uh and they just like write you a check or credit for different uh upgrades and things?
Products, yeah.
Okay. Are we are we trying any of that or do we are we not able to because of the Siemens thing?
I have not pursued, no, the Siemens thing does not. I haven't used it.
Okay.
But I have not looked into that. I mean, like light bulbs or things like that.
How many years we got left in that?
I don't know.
Seven, I think.
What's the total? Anybody got a guess?
Forty grand for us and but it's part, the thing that messed us up is it's part of the town too and they they don't wanna pay it off early. Right, Phil?
It's a couple one thousand, so yeah.
Yeah, I think our portion was like four hundred, something like that.
Can we pay our share off, Phil?
I don't know what money you want to do that with. I mean, you could use non-lapsing to do that, but you need that money on your offset. Otherwise, then I'll give you the hundred thousand dollar example is that it then that goes back into your budget next year and your send your budget's now already a percent higher. That hundred thousand dollar offset keeps it that particular thing at a zero.
Could we consider it at the end of the year if by chance we have more than our um what we want to put in the laxing fund?
You could. You could. Yes.
Okay.
I don't know whether you save anything. I I just I think it's just, it's not like you're you're, you know, saving interest or anything like that.
You can just free up going forward or whatever.
Yeah, that's annoying. I don't disagree with you a bit.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention the Eversource thing because I know we're not.
Yeah, well, just something specific, Sam, that you're thinking about or?
I'm just thinking about random things that happen. I don't know. I know they cover a bunch of random stuff, but like I know they do light bulbs. Oh, I think there was a weird caveat. Like they would do the a certain bulb, but not the ballast. So it would depend on the fixture. I think they they might do like air compressors. I know we have pneumatics.
I'll I'll look into it. Yeah, I don't know.
I have a contact if, you know, if that's helpful.
Text it to me, please.
Yep.
You have to be careful. That might have been how Siemens started.
No, it's, yeah, no, yeah, they did, you know, our famous twenty year olds super efficient LEDs.
Alright, moving on. Uh, number ten is in business, a whole bunch of minutes.
Arthur, you're good at both.
I will make a motion that the Wellington Board of Education approves the following minutes. The special meeting minutes from September twenty third, twenty twenty five. The regular meeting minutes from October fourteen, twenty twenty five, the special meeting minutes from October twenty first, twenty twenty five, and the special meeting minutes from October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
First and seconded, thank you so much. Um, any discussion? Alright, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, item eleven, old business, uh, school building part.
Yeah, that's me. So um, this is our chance to actually put this information out there. I emailed this to you. I had reached out to the Hall Foundation after a few meetings ago. I think John gave me a name. And I gave them a tour of Hall School, their executive committee in October twenty uh twenty five. Their representative, Christine Stetson, and I have uh been communicating and regarding the quitclaim deed that exists. Uh, and their foundation met separate from me. This was not like pushed on them. I did not request this stuff. I almost fell off my chair when this stuff was shared with me. I'm gonna be honest. Um, and they are have decided that they would like to adjust the deed. Um, they are have been working with an attorney uh and they're coordinating their efforts now with the town attorney and in their very near future. Um, and I just wanted to share the highlights of the deed change that they are spearheading. I can't guarantee this is exactly how they're going to be written, um but this is how the information was shared with me and I actually wrote this out to Christine and said, can you please confirm that this is what you're talking about? And she said, yes, it is. So item one, the Hall Foundation is willing to modify the current quitclaim deed, providing full ownership of the property and school to the town of Wellington. After the transfer, as long as the town of Wellington owns the property, the Hall family name will remain regardless of whoever, whether the land is used as a school, athletic fields, nature trails, or other purpose. The name changed. The name remains. Second, the Hall Foundation is willing to allow the town of Wellington to demolish any and all parts of the current building in the pursuit of a renovation or new school on the Hall School site. Even if the site is not used as a school and is instead repurposed as athletic facilities or open space, the building could be demolished, but the site would retain the Hall family name. Third, if the town of Wellington decides to sell the building or property at any time, the Hall Foundation will receive ten percent of the total sale price. The Hall Foundation will use the proceeds to maintain knights at the Federated Church. Um, I learned actually today that it is the Federated Church that uses it. That church is actually called the Clara Hall Elliott Memorial Church. That is owned by the Hall Foundation.
Which church is that?
That is the Federated Church.
It's the stone church and so on, but.
Yeah, correct, yes. Um, and they would use that money to maintain the church uh and continue their philanthropic, you know, work they've done in town for many, many years. Um, and lastly, the Hall Foundation requested the town of Wellington bear the cost of modifying the deed. I have not seen any legal paperwork from.
There's that last line? I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
Uh, they're gonna uh they are requesting the town pay for the legal fees to modify the deed.
Sounds fair.
A pretty fair statement and request, in my opinion, which I shared with her. I have not seen the legal proposal yet. Uh, I just literally heard from her today that uh to please pass along the attorney's name to I have emailed Mike McCoo and Peter Tanaka that information. This just highlights the specific adjustments that they have talked about. We actually didn't really talk about these things in the tour. Uh, so when I say like they, when I was very surprised when she called and shared this, I was very surprised. The good thing about this, this new information is gonna update the deed to clarify what can and cannot happen in Hall School. That's always been a question. What happens to Hall School? We now know. That's a good thing. Regardless of the outcome, a plan to preserve the history and legacy of the Hall family and the foundation should be commemorated in some form of exhibit at the school. And I say that whether we do nothing, whether we build the school or we renovate. Talking to Alice Castles, uh, who obviously you all know Alice, I believe. She has more, I will call it memorabilia, for lack of a better word, like just treasures, local treasures, basketball jerseys from the men's team would travel around and and they won a championship in the Hall Memorial Cafeteria. Things like that, that we could create a showcase someplace, no matter what happens. I just think that should be part of this process. Um, and whether that showcase moves from Hall to if there's a new building, um, that's the case. I will say that um the biggest thing for the board was the question, uh, and I don't think Rusty meant to do this, but when Rusty presented this plan and said build a new school on the Hall site, he was always thinking about a portion of the Hall School remaining nineteen eleven. This actually actually provides you more space, more flexibility of where if you were going to build on that site, you know you have power, you know you have uh electricity, you already have it. You could move a building back away and not have uh impact learning for multiple years. There's a lot of things that they have, in my opinion, opened up conversation, made it clearer for us. So I'm hoping this goes through. That information would then be taken by the school building committee to determine what to do with it. I just think uh, you know, this is some of the behind the scenes stuff of just, I'm just answering the phone when Christine calls. Uh, she was great to work with, but I'm not gonna take any credit for this. She did. When I offered the tour, she jumped on it. She made the phone call. She got them there. I just walked them around the building and showed them what the building looked like. Uh, and she did the hard work on this and talking to the attorney. So kudos to her. I think for from the foundation perspective, they have done a lot in this town and I think that any way we can continue to honor that, no matter what happens, I think it's just really important in the process, so.
I think there's been so many people in town that have benefited from the Hall Foundation and may not even know that they benefited from the Hall Foundation because they do it so secretly.
Yep.
Um, I I think this is phenomenal news and I just, it's amazing. Thank you, Siemens efficient.
That was the conversation, which is what we want.
I have a question about the school building committee. Will we have a representative on that committee?
I have no idea.
Okay.
I have not heard. I have zero information on. I think the uh outgoing selection, I think Tanaka just said I'm gonna leave it and let the next person take care of it. I I was not asking questions. I sent a the a sample charge to them, which is the old one. Um, because we didn't have really have any feedback. Ed specs are posted. Other than that, it's just a waiting game for them to get going and I will um gently push Mr. McCoo because time is of the essence in this.
I know they're doing, they're gathering a lot of applications. I know they're doing.
They are, okay.
So they're they're working on getting the people in spots.
Good. I haven't heard much, so I wondered, I mean, I think it's got a conversation that I go, but it I think that information changes it, so which is good.
I don't know.
Thank you. Anything else on this before we move on?
I have a question.
Alright. Anything else you got?
Sorry.
I didn't know we were talking about this.
No.
Okay, um, so that leaves us to number twelve, present to speak. Anyone in the room wish to speak presently? Mr. Tella.
Hello, I'm from the road, Wellington. So uh for nearly two years, I've been speaking out about a serious concern involving district employees, personal social media activity. According to Wellington Public Schools website, this individual is listed as an eighth grade E L A teacher. This teacher follows minors under eighteen and has posted photos of students taken inside the school buildings on personal social media accounts. This is not speculation. It's public and visible, and yet nothing has been done. I want to know why the board continues to allow this behavior to go unchecked. In other school districts, this kind of conduct would be clear violation of policy. Staff are not permitted to follow or interact with students under the age of eighteen on personal social media accounts, according to other districts I've looked at. Even if they're not in the same school, because I know that's been some of the defense I've heard once from the board is, well, this person can follow them because they're an E O Smith, even though they're seventeen years old. Those boundaries exist to protect students, protect staff and protect the district. Wellington has had this issue brought to its attention repeatedly again for two years, and there's still no clear policy to stop it. That is unacceptable. The question now isn't whether this is appropriate, it's why the board is refusing to act to protect the students. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, anybody else in there present to speak? Anybody online?
John T. has his hand up.
John T. here, you are.
Hi, good evening. Um, just a couple of things. Um, uh, first, for any board members uh for whom this is their last meeting, uh, thank you for your service. Everybody needs to step up to to run. A town like this doesn't run itself. Um, so thank you for your service. I heard Sam Asperi asking about um Eversource rebits, et cetera. I'm chair of the Wellington Sustainability and Energy Commission, so I'm uh happy to look uh and see what uh we might be able to do for you. John Murrow is our uh energy consultant. Uh, he's under contract with the town. Uh, we had him in for a meeting a little while ago, so I'll be happy to take a look and see if there's anything that we can do, that we can get any additional uh, you know, cost savings through uh amelioration of an electric bill or whatever we can do. Um, I'll see if there's anything we can do along those lines. Uh, Phil, I'll let you know. And uh great news on uh the Hall School. And, uh, great news on, uh, the Hall School, uh, conundrum with that, uh, deed. I hope that that goes through, uh, the way it was, you know, pretty much along the lines of, uh, what was, uh, just said, so, uh, great news, everybody, and, uh, thank you.
Um. Mike.
Good evening, Mike McCoo, Clover Springs Drive. Um, just a couple of quick things. Mr. Stevens, I did hear your comment about school building committee. And that's on my radar. Um, also, I would like to say how glad I am to hear the current status of the discussion with the Hall family. As many of you know, I participated in the discussions with the Hall family during the previous school building committee and. Uh, they were. Very good to work with back then, and their thought at the time was to stay in the background so as. To not look like they're trying to influence the town's decision. We've all realized that that actually accidentally created some roadblocks or some concerns for people. And so having this new way of looking at things is, uh, excellent, and I applaud Mr. Stevens and the Hall Foundation for doing that hard work. To make a good solution. Um. And that is it.
Thank you. Anyone else present to speak? Alright, um. Word comment. Does anyone have anything that they would like to share? Um, okay, I just wanted to, um. Thank. Uh, everybody who is present in this room. For their service, um, for supporting folks who served, um. On this Veterans Day. I, and whoever is watching, whoever might happen to see this. I feel like there's not enough thanks in the wide world for people who have served, um. And so, looking at you guys, especially today is important, so thank you. Anyone else? Alright, do I have a motion to adjourn? I need to adjourn.
Second.
And everyone will go aye, right?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's see, all those in favor?